Time for us to start. It is 6:02 PM on April 13th. We're 6:01, well, that's a 6:02. And we're going to call the meeting to order. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance and Commissioner Fife will help us read that.
I pledge this to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will begin by calling the role of the commissioners and we will just start at that end of the table and go down if you will identify yourself and say whether or not you have any conflicts of interest. You need to push the button.
I did. Peter Fife, no conflicts of interest.
Okay, Miles Miller, no conflict.
Dan O'Gonzales, no conflict.
Brian Henry, no conflict.
Laurie Urquaga, no conflict.
Lisa Jensen, no conflict.
Robert Knudsen, no conflicts.
Ally Jones, no conflict.
Thank you. We have two items on the agenda tonight. Both of them are legislative, so we will be making recommendations to the city council for those. And I will read in the first item. Philip Ing requests a zone map amendment from the R18, one-family residential zone to the LDR, low-density residential zone, in order to allow for an accessory dwelling unit located at 1029 West, 1020 North in the River Grove neighborhood. And Dustin Wright has the staff report.
Thank you. So this property here will locate us where we're at. 1020 North, 100 West here, the property is located just right there off of 1020 North. It's currently a vacant lot that the applicant has requested a rezone for. And so on this one, we don't have a project plan or anything that would go along with it. But the applicant has also provided a potential site plan for that, which we'll take a look at here in a minute. But the rezone request would be to change from the existing zoning, which is the residential, single-family, R18 zone. You can see around the area here that that's what the surrounding zoning is. The general plan map shows residential for this area in the city. And so there would be no change there with the request. And then here, the applicants provided a potential layout of the property with a single-family home that would accommodate an accessory apartment, an interior accessory apartment, and providing the required parking that would be required for that use. So staff has reviewed this request and feels that this would fit within this area without substantial, or I guess, any related issues that would go along with it. It would help fit the general plan. And staff's recommendation would be to forward a positive recommendation to the city council for this rezone request to go from the single-family residential to the LDR, the low-density residential zone. Just, I guess, briefly, I'll mention a little bit about the LDR zone. It allows for the accessory apartment if it's an owner-occupied structure. And so that would be the reason why they're requesting that zone. It also allows for duplexes and other things like that if they're on a larger lot. But the lot size for this site wouldn't allow for a duplex or anything other than the single-family home with an accessory apartment. So there was no need for any other type of development agreement to limit this to that desire to use from the applicant. So yeah, staff's recommendation would be to forward positive recommendation to the city council. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, commissioners, do you have any questions about the project? Mr. Wright, I'm kind of curious as to why they're doing six parking spaces. That seems like a lot.
Yeah, so this is, I guess, kind of a layout we asked them to provide. And so I think they're just showing what potentially could go there. I don't know if they need all of those. I don't think the code would necessarily limit that. I think that those fit within the code. But maybe they could address that as well, the applicants here. And maybe there's a reason there, why they're proposing those.
And other question is the eight-foot setback on the side. I know, is that specific to this neighborhood or this zone? Because at other places, it's 10.
Yeah, so the zone allows, it says eight feet and 10 feet. So you could choose an eight-foot and a 10-foot. But it has a minimum of one of each of those, so.
Okay, and the 17 for the driveway is more than 10, so they're good?
Yep, that would be fine over there. So yeah, the site plan, I think, generally would be fine. We just wanted to make sure that the home could fit on there. And so we asked them to provide something that would show how that would fit so that we don't get down the road and then they're coming back saying, hey, our lot's not big enough for the home. We need a variance or something like that. We want to make sure that we could see that what they're requesting would work in this zone. So I think that's what this provides. But it's not necessarily they'll build this exact thing, per se. But we know that it is feasible based off of what they've provided.
Thank you. Other questions? Yes, Commissioner Fife.
Yeah, so if I'm understanding correctly, they're wanting to build one structure with an accessory dwelling within that structure? Or are they wanting to do two separate structures, one single-family home and an ADU on the side?
So they've requested a, or they've, I think, stated in the materials that we've reviewed that it would be a single-family home with an interior accessory apartment. So it'd be.
So one structure?
Or, yeah, one structure, owner-occupied, and then the accessory apartment.
So I guess out of curiosity, would there be anything that would limit their ability to, and I'm not saying I'm for or against it, I'm just curious, would there be anything that would limit their ability to build an ADU separate from the single-family home structure? So two structures on that property or?
I believe the zone allows for detached accessory dwelling. But again, with that component, that it would still be owner-occupied in the main structure.
Okay.
Yeah, just to know, I think you mentioned that R18 was a single-family residential, but I'm just looking at the aerial photo, it looks like there's some duplexes in the surrounding properties as well. I'm just going based off of the dual sidewalks leading up to the homes. Yeah, the two properties on the right.
Yeah, and we see things like that throughout the city. The current zone doesn't necessarily reflect what historic zones have been that maybe at some point allowed for duplex or things of that nature. But yeah, the current zone for that whole area is R18. So yeah, it's highly possible at some point there was a different zone in place that allowed for duplexes in this area or however that came to be, but.
Any other questions from commissioners for staff? Okay, we'd like to invite the applicant to come up. If you would state your name and your city of residence as you begin your presentation.
Thank you so much. My name is Philip Ing. My city of residence is Provo. And just like to thank Dustin and also the planning commission for this opportunity here to speak with me on this.
Do you have any comments or responses to questions you heard or other things you'd like to tell us?
So I think in regards to whether or not, you know, we're going to have six parking spaces, right? So we knew it was a concern that in terms of having an ADU that there would be no permanent, there would not be off-street, on-street parking or off-property parking for the residents that stay there. So we just wanted to give assurance and say that for all the permanent residents that are living there, we'll provide enough parking spaces on the property.
Okay, and you will be living there?
Yeah, so to give details on the ownership, so the owner is my mother. And then, so I'm just applying for that.
As her representative, okay. All right. Questions from commissioners for the applicant? I'm not seeing any. Thank you, Mr. Ing.
Thank you so much.
All right. We have, as I go back through my agenda, I'm not used to being here in person. Do we have any public comments? Neighborhood Chair? Okay, yes.
Yes, I'm the Aaron Scabland. I'm the neighborhood chair in the River Grove neighborhood. And the planning commission may have heard this from Dustin, but I just wanted to report that we had a neighborhood meeting as required as part of the process. There were only three or four people there, but information about the neighborhood meeting was dispersed widely, so people had a chance to weigh in. Before the meeting, I heard from one neighbor who expressed some concerns about parking, but I think those were resolved. And a vote wasn't necessary at the neighborhood meeting. But kind of unsolicited, there was unanimous support for this rezone. And from my perspective as the neighborhood chair, I see no reason why this should not be approved. And I hope also that the owner does not feel compelled to use this valuable space for six parking spaces. That seems very excessive and it takes us in the wrong direction. That, as was pointed out, there are duplexes just around the corner that have been grandfathered in. People along that street regularly park on the street. I think that seems like good use of that space. If they're, you know, regularly moving their vehicles, I see no problem whatsoever in the use of that public space for car storage. And I'm willing to take any questions that you might have.
Thank you, commissioners. Any questions? We're quiet tonight.
All right, thank you.
Okay, do we have any other members of the public to comment? Does not look like it, so we will close the public hearing portion of this item. And time for the commissioners to discuss. And we will start with Commissioner Jensen.
So though I appreciate that there are duplexes in the area, the fact that it has been zoned R18 and those duplexes are grandfathered in makes me hold back because R18 was, is all over. Like, this is a teeny little parcel in a giant field of R18, and that was the intended use of the neighborhood. So I know maybe it was there as a protective use, but that's just one little thing I worry about. I don't like the idea of less than an 8,000-square-foot parcel that is zoned differently than everything all around it. That feels very patchwork to me. Though my heart says, yes, let's help this lady have a great place to live and build a neighborhood, you know. That's just from a planning perspective, that worries me. I'm also worried about the precedent of if you want to have an accessory apartment and the zone doesn't allow it, let's just change a little zone so you can have it, but your neighbor can't. And what prevents that accessory unit from being used as an Airbnb? Maybe that should have been a question for Dustin. If the owner is living in it, how do you designate that rental unit as a residential use versus a commercial use, which in my mind, an Airbnb is? But I feel like it's opening Pandora's box once you start giving people permission to have apartments. Because then it might be more convenient for them to use it as that sort of a rental property.
Yes, so an Airbnb would be an example of a short-term rental, which aren't permitted in a residential zone or the LDR zone. And so part of having the accessory apartment is that they're having to apply for a rental dwelling license. And so there's information in there about the time of how long it can be rented to not be a short-term rental, so.
Okay, so we just have to hope that since they're entering the process legally that there'll be more oversight on it? Because I have several Airbnbs in my neighborhood that clearly aren't allowed.
Obviously, anyone can go and put one illegally somewhere. But yeah, Airbnb wouldn't be allowed by, right in that zone, so.
Okay, those are just my concerns, the patchwork nature of it and the possible Pandora's box of doing it.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I think that while it doesn't fit in with the overarching zone, like, while our responsibility is to uphold zones, it's also to build communities that make sense. And if you look at the context of where this property is, there are other homes like it. There seems to be plenty of space for it to fit without changing the feel of the neighborhood. The space right now seems to be somewhat underutilized. And so I think that adding housing to this area where it makes sense would not only facilitate people living there, but also improve the neighborhood look overall. So even though I do appreciate that we want to hesitate before making a patchwork area, I do think that this makes sense in the context of what's being asked.
Commissioner Fife?
Yeah, I think also just to comment on that, because I also appreciate the desire and need to maintain conformity throughout zoning and different properties. I think we should also appreciate the fact that to change a property zone, you have to go through the neighborhood chair, the neighborhood, which, you know, those are people that are legitimately concerned and living in that area. And if they've approved it, ultimately, I think the weightier decision should be more on the neighborhood than our desire to maintain conformity, I guess I should say. And so I think that perhaps since the neighborhood was informed, people did show up, they were unanimous, they were in support of it unanimously. I think that that would be reason enough, I'd say, to maybe provide a different, maybe a bit of lenience in this. That's just my opinion.
Mr. Henry?
Yeah, my thoughts on this, as far as community character, we've got a duplex. And then on the other side of this lot is a single-family home. It feels like when you think about a fate of community, a home with an accessory apartment isn't quite a duplex, but it's not quite a single-family. So in my mind, it fits the neighborhood. As well as the patchwork concern from Commissioner Jensen, if they were going for a C1 here, that to me would seem patchwork, where this is a residence in a residential neighborhood, where the architecture will fit the character of the neighborhood. As well as if I had my choice between a duplex, it could be two rentals or an accessory unit where it has to be owner-occupied in at least one of the units. That to me says it would have a better chance of preserving the community nature of the neighborhood. I don't feel like this would be patchwork. I'm actually not afraid of patchwork when the uses are similar and compatible uses. Again, if this was, they were going for an industrial zone or something else, but the LDR and the R8 to me are so similar, I don't really feel like it's much of a patchwork. My only issue, and of course, it wouldn't be addressed at this point, but the driveway to me doesn't seem functional. I actually ran some numbers on that 17-foot driveway with the back out or the sideload garage. And a standard minivan would only have about four inches to make that turn if it was on a turnstile. And so getting an average car in that garage is going to be so difficult that it wouldn't get used, in my opinion. So that's more of just a comment as you move forward with architecture. You're probably going to want a little bit more room there, as well as the size of the garage. We had a garage in Albuquerque, we called it a one-and-a-half-car garage, because two cars technically could fit, but you couldn't get out of the car. So just some thoughts on that for the applicant moving forward. Maybe give a little more space to get in that back garage, if you're going to keep that back garage. But I'm not afraid of an accessory dwelling unit here. I think it would be better than a duplex. And those are already present, so I don't think it hurts the character.
Okay, any other comments? I'll add mine. I do have some concerns about the patchwork nature. And I think that we should bring that to a work meeting to talk about how the plan, how the city wants to manage that with the new push to include more accessory dwelling units. Just so that we can know what the sense is, because I do see that this is a reasonable use for this space. And it seems to fit. I would not like to see six parking spaces. I think a little bit less would be better because that just invites high-density rental type of uses. Although I can, I know some families where just the family needs five cars. So we can understand where some of that comes from. But I don't have a problem with this use, but I do think that we need to be consistent and have some sort of cohesive philosophy about how we do this. Other questions from commissioners? Yes?
I would just say that if, in my mind, if staff feels okay with it and if the neighborhood feels okay with it, and, you know, I don't see them having any conflicts. I don't see why. Obviously, there might be some touch-ups on the actual design, but, you know, I don't see, if they both feel comfortable with it, I don't see why we shouldn't.
Commissioner Jensen?
To be clear, I to be clear, I also think this is a fantastic use and a great buffer. I'm just playing the devil's advocate to make sure that we've got everything out. And so two more questions. Is there any other way to think creatively to accomplish this? This without changing the zone? Uh, is LDR the, the least possible, the least invasive o- option?
Um, yeah, so before, uh, like earlier this year, the um state required that each city uh accommodate these ADUs in certain parts of the city. And so um, with that, our overlay zone went away. And so um, typically that's what someone would request um in the past would be to, to have an overlay zone applied. So you'd have R one eight A or something like that for the accessory dwelling. Um, but now with that gone, this would be the the way for someone that wanted to have that to go through this process to request it through um, zone like the LDR zone that does allow for that. And I think that's a good zone to use because it has, although for especially for this site, um, on other ones we've done, if it was a larger site, there's issues of okay, that is on, that zone allows for a duplex. The applicant would have to enter into a development agreement to say, we're not going to do a duplex, even though the zone would allow it. So in this case, I feel like that's the um, that's that part wouldn't be applicable, and this would be the um, the gentlest means, I guess, to, to go about having an ADU applied at this point.
Um, the staff report states that one of the safety safety valves on this is that the lot is so small that they would never be able to qualify for the duplex requirements. But what if um, the house to the east also applied for LDR and put on really persuasive sad faces and said, well, the guy next to me has one, and I want to put in an accessory apartment. And now we've got two adjacent lots that could then be acquired and you have a bigger property that could do something bigger. How do we, how do we safeguard against that sort of a snowball effect? Obviously, if it were to come next week, we would say, hey, we remember why this was done. And no, that's not okay. But you know, ten years down the road with a different commission, no one remembers why this little lot is LDR and nothing else is. So how do we safeguard against that?
Yeah, I think the safeguard is the rezone request, so it has to go through this process. And and with rezone, there's, there's lots of uh abilities to, to be able to say no to a, to a rezone and just state those findings that um, while this one worked, this is uh too much of a request or something like that. And so I think a rezone's a, a good safeguard there for any concerns you might have about there being a potential precedent set or something like that. I don't, I don't see that as an issue because we have that uh rezone process available.
Okay.
And maybe just a comment along that line. I mean, a couple of things, you have a zone change application in front of you tonight, right? That he has the right to have heard and voted up or down. So I would encourage you to focus on that. If we don't like that, you can deny it for justifiable reasons or whatever. When you deny it, you could suggest that if they had done something different, you might consider it differently in the future in a future application or whatever. But I don't know that I would necessarily debate other zoning options that might work in this context, because that's not really what's in front of you. Um, the other thing I would say is thinking about what could happen ten years from now or whatever, I understand your concerns, but ten years from now, this could be a whole different environment. A lot of different things could have happened. Um, and so I think it's difficult to try to anticipate what that neighborhood could, could be in ten years and try to solidify a vision of the, of what that will be today. Does that make sense? So I think the application that's in front of you is, does this make sense in that neighborhood at this time? Do you have neighborhood support for it? Does it compromise the integrity of the neighborhood? And make your decision based on that. That's what my suggestion would be.
I, I appreciate that. The, the concern I still have is even though it, it's good now, we don't know if another request will come in two years and ten years and, you know. So it's always good to just sort of the play the what if something snowballs. My second question I had, um, or my second devil's advocate was if this was in a different part of the city, would we even be entertaining the notion? Like, there are times when something like this has been requested, I'd like to do a low density residential, I'd like to turn my very large underdeveloped property into something else that frankly works very well with the very busy street next to it and the higher density housing here. And the neighborhood is not happy with it. So do we just say, well, this neighborhood's happy with it, and so it's fine? Or do we come up with, like Laurie said, some sort of a standard of how do we judge when it's okay and when it's not without emotions getting in the way? So those are just thoughts.
Well, I would personally hope so. I, I given the position of city council and their um taking a, a less friendly position towards ADUs, I um, it's kind of put us in the situation where we don't have that overlay anymore. And so we will get petitions like this and uh, if they're right for the neighborhood, then I'll support them.
Yeah, I, I think, I guess for me, it, it, it just goes back to what, what is the consensus within the neighborhood? Um, I think that would be the best fail safe. I think with, with every zoning change or every zoning request, if that's required, which has been done in the neighborhood, the ones who are living there, driving those streets, they're okay with it. I think uh, I don't know if our job necessarily is to rein in neighborhoods, but to necessarily work for the neighborhoods. Um, and so in my mind, the fail safe or moving down the line, I think the fail safe is already built into the system where neighborhood has to you, we, we would like to take the neighborhood's input and, and in my opinion, whatever the neighborhood says would probably um, influence personally my decision greatly, greater than any, I guess, future concerns.
I have a question for staff. Um, if and, and I'm not speaking specifically about this particular project, but if we were to have the neighboring lot that also was zoned LDR, so they both two lots next to each other have been zoned LDR already. If somebody wants to um take those buildings down and build another one, does that have to come back through planning commission? Or does that happen automatically because the zone exists?
So you're asking if an adjacent property to this were also rezoned LDR and they all decided to tear down.
Both, and.
Yeah, so in that case, they'd have to go through a project plan application that would uh you know, go through a, a public hearing and all of that uh for the project plan application.
Okay, that is one of the safety valves that I was concerned about.
And, and when that property got rezoned, um, it would go through, you know, the rezoning process and depending on what they were proposing, would probably, if they were proposing to do that parcel plus this parcel and do something more than a single family home with an ADU, um, then we'd probably have them do a concept plan application along with the rezone application. So you'd see all of that together as it, as it came through the, this process.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. Um, other comments from commissioners? Are we ready to entertain a motion? Yes.
I'll make a motion.
Henry.
Uh, I motion we forward a positive recommendation to the city council for item number one. Philip In requests a zone map amendment from the R. Sound just go away. Oh, no, it's still there. From the R one eight, one family residential to the LDR low density residential zone in order to allow for an accessory dwelling unit located at ten twenty nine west, ten twenty north River Grove neighborhood.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. That was Commissioner. Okay, do we have any discussion on the motion? All right. Um, seeing none, we'll just go from my left to my right. Um, Commissioner Fife.
Aye.
Commissioner Miller.
Aye.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Henry.
Aye.
Commissioner Jensen.
Aye.
Commissioner Knudsen.
Aye.
And Commissioner Jones.
Aye.
And I also vote aye, so the uh recommendation to forward an approval is unanimous. Thank you. Um, item number two. Um, Quinn Peterson requests an ordinance text amendment to section fourteen twenty one D one forty in order to change the design standard regulations for the West Gateway Zone. This has citywide application. Um, and Dustin Wright again has the staff report.
Thank you. So the West Gateway Zone is outlined here in red, uh, just to give you an idea of where that is in the city, it's on uh Center Street and just off of the uh freeway uh interchange there. Um, so Center Street coming into the city from the freeway. Um, and the applicant's request would be to replace the um, the existing design standards uh in the West Gateway Zone with the design standards that we have in our other uh downtown zones. So the um, the, the downtown, the, the uh, the gateway downtown zone and the ITOD zones uh all share these downtown development design standards. And so the request would be to um add the West Gateway uh in, into that and have that be the design standards for all of that area. So jumping back here, uh, that would be the West Gateway Zone that I have highlighted. And then as you move east, you have the Gateway Downtown Zone and then the Downtown One, Downtown Two and um over into the ITOD Zone. So the design standards would be applicable uh in this location. Um, so staff has reviewed that request from the applicant and feels that that would be a um, a positive uh change in the code to allow for that to have the same design standards. Uh, and so, yeah, if uh, this uh text amendment would go to the city council, so the, the recommendation would be for an approval of this proposed uh text amendment to the city council to, to make these changes for that. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about the proposed text amendment.
Commissioner Miller.
Yeah, I'm just curious to know if, if the, the chunk that we're looking at that's highlighted in red, if the space between that and the downtown zone are not included in this design standard, or if they already have that design standard in place and we're just extending it past that, or I guess that, that in between part, I'm just curious to know what we're doing with that.
You're referring to the, the GW, the gateway? Yeah, so that zone is one of these that currently has the design standards that we're requesting for this West Gateway. So yeah, as you come in from the freeway, it would start with the West Gateway and be the Gateway Downtown Zone, and then the downtown zones, they'd all be part of that same design standards.
Gotcha. So that part already has those design standards. We're just extending it even further. Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, that was my question. Thanks.
Yep.
Commissioner Jensen.
Um, can you show us what the general plan shows for this area, just out of curiosity? I was wondering if it designates it as commercial or if it has a residential portion, because that's kind of what's, I'm assuming that's why the design standards are more lax there because it wasn't yet commercial. Do you know what the general plan shows?
Um, so we have our downtown uh plan, um, which has this zone included in that, I believe. Um, and it would be very similar to the, you know, I think it's all, I believe it's all classified as the Gateway Zone in the, in that downtown plan. Um, I think the, the.
But like the future land use map where it just sort of tells us what the, the use would be? Is it commercial, residential?
Yeah, I think it's probably um commercial or mixed use along uh Center Street and then tapering down. Um, I believe it's when you're within a hundred feet of First North. Um, that, the, that, that's, that's what that zone um currently would have it uh kind of transition, it's got a transition section in that code. Um, currently that would be unchanged um to protect the residential character of the neighborhoods to the north. Um, so that's built in already to the zones. These design standards, they're basically, a lot of them are um pretty much, there's four of them that are exactly the same, so this would just be adding to those.
Making them a little more rigorous, I imagine, right?
Yeah, just having
Consistency is the most important.
Consistency than, than what uh would currently be there. I think um, part of the history on it was, uh, there was a gas station that, that went in this location and to make that um, part of, part of having that uh be able to, to work and, and meet the design standards. I think some of them were modified at that time, but at this point, I think I'm moving forward, it would make sense to have them match the rest of the downtown as you're entering into the city. Um, that's kind of the first uh look you get at, at the city as you're coming in. So having those design standards match, I believe, is the, the intent here with that change.
So my second question was going to be, what was the logic or reasoning for adopting different standards? And it sounds to me like there just weren't any. And then when the Maverick went in, they needed to have some. And now we're trying to bring them all into compl- to more.
Yeah, I, I believe they had them, and I think this, I think that at that time, that was all the Gateway Zone, and then it changed uh to the West Gateway was created for, for working that. But yeah, I think that's essentially kind of the, a little bit of the history on it. And, and then looking forward, I feel like uh, matching and having that consistency would be beneficial.
Hey, other? Commissioner Fife.
Yeah, so I, I think you mentioned this. I just wanted to double check that I was understanding correctly. So with buildings that are currently there, because I know there's like a mechanic shop kind of kitty corner from Maverick and whatnot, are those going to be grandfathered in? Are those going to be required to change? If they change ownership, what, what, like moving forward with existing buildings that are there and businesses that are there, are they going to be required to uh change their architecture?
Uh, no, so if, yeah, if they're constructed a certain way that doesn't comply with the current or with the proposed zone, we don't uh make them retroactively go back and bring them into compliance. Um, if they were to desire to build something new on the site, then the new portion would, would need to comply with those design standards.
Okay, other questions? Yes.
Just want to make sure comments were allowed. I think in my mind, it really just seems like I just, I guess my question would be, I don't know why we didn't do it sooner in this sense of because I, I think we talked a lot about like how we can preserve downtown and what we can do, but we don't really try to see how we can extend that same design or same, extend that same functionality of what downtown is. So I think this is great that we can, you know, active, proactively extend what, you know, downtown is and, you know, the the quality of, of de- design and building is. So I think it's great.
Okay, um, and I probably should have had you hold that till after the applicant talked, but that's okay. We're getting used to this. We're all getting used to this. So, um, but yeah, we do have the discussion. Um, yes, Mr. Peterson. Yes.
Yes, there's a little bit of context.
And for, for the record, your name and your low, your residence.
And, oh, thank you. Um, yeah, a little bit of the history on this. I'm, I am also the chair of the designer view committee, and so we make recommendations to you guys on architectural renderings. I've been doing that for a number of years now. And that's what brought this to my attention was we had a project come in, we approved some architectural renderings after a handful of tweaks, because it looked like a church for some reason, but it wasn't. Anyway, we approved it, looked great. They came back a year later and said, hey, we don't have the budget. We just want it to be one hundred percent stucco. And I said, well, this is our gateway. I'm really concerned. I don't think we want to approve this. And then I learned we didn't really have any grounds to reject it for that reason, because there are no design standards here. So that was alarming for the downtown neighborhood, for the downtown businesses, and for everyone else that I've spoken with since to hear that there's, there are not design standards in this West Gateway currently. Um, a little bit of the history, because I think, I think we got it clear, but just so that you do know, the entire red section outside of the red outline used to all have the same design standard. And when the Maverick came in, it didn't fit that design standard. So rather than giving an exception for that property, they specifically they specifically changed the design standards in that whole outline area when they came in, is my understanding of the background. And we're essentially asking for that to come back because there are now no design standards. The big concern and the reason this matters, as you know, the gateway is the term for the area when you get off the freeway as you enter into the downtown. And right as that road bends onto Center Street, these are all the first structures you see while you are welcome to Provo. Our concern is them having no design standards, um, is alarming, and we want to make sure. And the design standards are nothing bonkers. Uh, it's just like we have everywhere else throughout the downtown area, just reasonable things about design materials. And, and that just allows the design review committee to factor those in while we approve architectural renderings and make recommendations to your committee. So, um, what other questions do you have that I might be able to answer?
Just curious if you, um, if we change this and the city council does it, will that apply to this?
I don't believe so. I think it's already done and approved, the other one. I, right? Okay, yeah, yeah.
They've already gone through. Okay. Uh, there are questions for the applicant? Uh, yes, one. Commissioner Jensen.
Um, this is probably defeating the purpose of the change, but it, just to be sure, are there any, um, of the, the GW or downtown design standards that would maybe seem too rigorous for the West Gateway area?
No, that's why I worked closely with staff to find out, you know, uh, what do we recommend? Because I'm not the expert. How do we make this reasonable so that there are some rules that we can fall back on in the design review committee when we see applicants? And for them to be, nothing, this was pretty mild. Yeah, th- there are a lot. In fact, most residential neighborhoods have design standards. Um, e- even when you're redoing a, a home or you're doing maybe a duplex, there's some sort of design standards. And so we're always evaluating and comparing and making recommendations to you guys whenever a new project comes in. And just for this to have nothing was, was alarming.
Okay, anything else? Thank you. All right, um, do we have any members of the public here too? Does, I can't see around this.
There's 15 people out there.
Yeah. It's huge. So, um, okay, uh, we have called for public comment. Nobody appears to be taking advantage of that opportunity, so we will close the public part of the hearing. And, um, now invite the commissioners to discuss the application. Commissioner Jensen.
I had something I probably should have asked Dustin. On page seven of the staff report, um, in the blue text of the design standards, number two, it says the standard set forth in section 14.34.3 Provo City Code Transitional Development Standards shall not apply in the WG Zone. Is that supposed to say shall or shall not?
Yeah, so that would be shall not, as, as written.
Okay. Because the previous page in the red, number two, it says they shall apply in the WG Zone. So I just wanna make sure that that was how it's supposed to be.
Yeah, so this is the same language that we see in the Gateway and the downtown and the ITOD zones. Um, also in the, um, also in the Gateway Zone, uh, there is language in there about, uh, transitional standards as, as you get into the residential to the north and things like that. So that part, uh, is already covered in this, in the code, and we don't need to
Okay.
also reference the other ones.
Want to make sure that it was correct.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, other comments, discussion items?
Do I need to remake my comment since I did it?
No. I've done the same thing. Started the conversation.
Right, sequence of events.
So, yeah. Um, anything else? No? No discussion? Are we ready to entertain a motion? She says she would.
I said Robert wants to do it.
Okay, I would propose that we send a positive recommendation to the municipal council for item number two. Quinn Peterson requests an ordinance text amendment to section 14.21D.140 in order to change the design standard regulations for the West Gateway Zone. Citywide application.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, that's Commissioner Jones. Now we have the opportunity to discuss the motion. Commissioner Jensen is getting ready to vote, so I guess we're going for it. Um, Commissioner Fife.
Aye.
Commissioner Miller.
Aye.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Henry. Commissioner Jensen.
Aye.
Commissioner Knudsen.
Aye.
And Commissioner Jones.
Aye.
And I also vote aye. So the the application is again approved unanimously for a forward positive recommendation to the municipal council. Thank you, everyone. Do we have any other items of business that we need to discuss before we adjourn?
I just had the one question about that, that developer who came about his project on Center Street in Geneva. It sounded like we were gonna do a workshop with him at some point. Was that ever on the agenda, or am I making that up? Did anyone else see that?
I don't know that we're ready for them to come back yet, but
At some point.
At some point. They're invited to come and have a work meeting with us.
Gotcha. I just curious to know. Yeah, okay, great. I was just curious.
So I don't think it's oblig- obligatory, but
I'm jumping the gun again, you're telling me?
No, no. Come back.
Okay.
Well, it'll, it'll come back to this meeting, whether or not it comes to a work meeting.
Great.
Um, all right, well, um, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
I second that.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, see you in two weeks.